Poughkeepsie Planning Board Meeting, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a full house this evening. I'd like to welcome our newest planning board member called Jamadi Dant to my left. This is her first meeting. She is now a regular member of the planning board. We have seven people this evening, so that's good. And we have a pretty full agenda. So with that, start with the number, the first order of business will be to let you know that the Underhill Solar, that's under Plan Review C1, Underhill Solar is off the agenda this evening. They will be coming to a future meeting, but they were not ready to present this evening, so we took them off the agenda. Okay. Public hearings, there are three, two to be adjourned. The first public hearing is Perez, 16 South Grand Avenue, Site Plan Public Hearing Regarding Conversion of a One Family Dwelling to a Two Family Dwelling, 16 South Grand Avenue, Zoned ATC Arlington Town Center, District .11 Acres, An Unlisted Action, Mario Perez Rodriguez, owner. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good.
My name is Paul Pealan, I'm the architect for Mr. and Mrs. Perez. I expected Mr. Perez to be here, but his wife had a baby on Wednesday, so he might be a little tied up.
That's no excuse.
Don't let that influence your vote. And Nicole, it's my first meeting too, so this should be fun. So Mr. and Mrs. Perez are here for site plan approval. They purchased a home at 16 South Grand Avenue, which was formerly a funeral home. If you check their Dutchess County Parcel Access records, it's now currently listed as a single-family home, but no alterations were made of any significance since it was a funeral home. They would, their proposal is to convert it to a Two Family Home. And they would like to operate, or they would like to live in the lower level, and they are trying to make the arrangements for the Two Families so that Mr. Perez's sister can live on the second floor. The building footprint is, is going to remain basically unchanged. We do intend to add a four-foot by six-foot deck at the rear side of the building, so that they can accommodate an entrance in and out from the rear. The exterior is basically going to stay the same, with the exception of the addition of new windows, which are required for the new rooms that they intend to put in. There is an existing paved area at the rear side of the house, which we intend to use for parking. And on Monday evening, we were granted a variance for unit density from the ZBA. The front entrance will stay basically the same, again, replacement of windows, but from the street, South Grand Avenue, there will only be one door. The entry was going to serve both of those units, so once they go inside, they'll take the stairs up to the second-floor unit, and the first-floor unit will have an access from that space.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
You're very welcome. There's Mr. Perez.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's okay.
He was waiting for me to finish outside, I saw him out there.
Hi, what do you have, Chris?
Staff are recommending that the board conduct an uncoordinated secret review and approve a negative declaration, meaning no environmental effect, and adopt a resolution for a conditional site plan approval. Procedurally, it's a little unusual, the uncoordinated review is to allow the zoning board, if the planning board acts tonight, it would allow the zoning board to proceed separately with its own review, and it wouldn't hold things up.
Which they already did.
They already did it.
Did it.
Oh, okay, what do you know, I didn't know that. Even better.
So zoning's, zoning's done?
Zoning's done. So, that said, there really were a couple of notations on the plan for cleanup. That's about it.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, I hear a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
So moved? Second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Call a question, open a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Is anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application? Carol, did anyone sign up? No? Okay, hearing no one, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Let me go around the board, and we'll start with Peter tonight.
First, Mr. Perez, congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, it's a glorious occasion.
Yes, thanks.
His wishes. I only have one question, maybe we have enough engineers in the room that can answer it. But you're converting a funeral parlor to a dwelling, and I'm not familiar with remediation procedures, there are a lot of, obviously, there's a lot of organic material, chemicals and so forth. Do you know, do you have any knowledge that, you know, whatever steps are required, they've been taken to make sure that the space is safe for habitation?
I don't know of any, but I would be willing to work with the Building Department to make sure that they are comfortable with what is the environmental condition of that space.
Just, I'm just saying, better safe than sorry, especially you're bringing a new baby into the house. I'm just saying, better safe than sorry.
Okay.
Just a point of information, when, before I did the review, I did check with the Building Department, and if I recall correctly, either they or the zoning department advised me that the funeral, it's been in residential use for over a year, because that was important to establish the, the existing use of the structure. So it, the funeral parlor is no longer in existing use and hasn't been for a year.
At least a year.
Okay, but it's still a reasonable question to ask, if the chemicals and things that they use there in the day are-
Hopefully, they already mitigated a year ago.
Mitigated, right.
Hopefully, they did.
Okay, I'll make that a note. That's good. Good question, thank you. Carl?
Nothing really, I note the ZBA approved the density variance, so it's good to go with me.
Good. Ben?
This was a one-family home, it's going to be two. Is there sufficient parking there for, by code?
There is an area at the back which is paved, and based on the comments that I received from the Planning Department, we have to work out exactly how we're going to arrange those, but the density is 1.5 parking spaces per unit, so we need a total of three. I believe that there's enough area in there, I think I just need to work with Mr. Holman and Mr. Wilson to try and work out the radiuses and the turning.
The, there's actually a fairly large paved area already existing, from when it was a funeral home, you know, when they would start out the-
Okay.
So, yeah, I, we believe there's sufficient parking, but we'll put that in with them on it.
Good. Brian?
Good.
Nicole?
I have no questions.
Okay, good. Andy, anything?
The only thing really of significance is that we'd like to see approximate sewer and water service locations on the site plan, and we just have to work out with the, with the Water Department if there's going to be one meter or two.
Very good. I got those comments on Wednesday, so, and we'll address them.
Good. Thank you.
All right, I move that the planning board conduct an uncoordinated secret review for the Pierce Perez Residence conversion to Two Family Dwelling application, and determine that it would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that an environmental impact statement will be, no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the negative declaration drafted September 14th, 2017, prepared by the Planning Department.
It's been moved in seconded by several people. That the planning board conduct an uncoordinated secret review for the Perez Residence conversion to a Two Family Dwelling application, and determine that it would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the negative declaration dated September 14th, 2017, prepared by the Planning Department. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Perez Residence conversion to Two Family Dwelling site plan, subject to the following numbers one through eight.
Okay, and if I might amend that to add to number nine, the comments that were made-
And number nine, comments about the funeral home residence and verifying the parking radiuses with the Department.
Right. Accepted, thank you. And moved in seconded. I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Perez Residence conversion to a Two Family Dwelling site plan, subject to the following, one through eight, and number nine, the, the comments that were made regarding the former funeral home, any chemicals and the parking. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. I, we, I make a motion that we waive architectural review, because the house is basically the same as, as it was.
Yes, sir.
I'll sack him out.
So we got a second, call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Okay, you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Go. Throw your new home and your new child.
Oh, thanks.
Great. Okay. Public hearing number two, Creek Road Apartments. Site plan hearing for proposed site rezoning by the town, from BN Neighborhood Business to RM Residence Multi-Family District, and a site plan application to the planning board as amended for 31 apartments in one building of three-story height. 84 to 92 Creek Road, Zoned BN Neighborhood Business District, secret negative declaration was adopted on June 15th, 2017, JPJPR Holdings LLC. On June 15th, 2017, the planning board approved a secret negative declaration, and so on. The public hearing was adjourned to December, September 14th, 2017. Tonight, I'm going to recommend and move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing out to November 16th, 2017. Second. So moved in second, the planning board adjourned the public hearing to November 16th, 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. River Point Residential and West Park Professional Building. This is probably the longest time an item has stayed on the agenda, in the 20-plus years it's been there, about 19, I think, no.
Not quite.
But we've got patience, though, maybe someday we can make this a reality. Site plan and aquatic resource permit hearing and lot line revision regarding a proposed development plan amended to include a single seven-story building containing 85 age-restricted dwelling units, 31,534 square feet medical office, and 13,976 square foot retail pharmacy or medical services, service uses, 2055 South Road and 83 Old Post Road, Zoned OR Office Research District with a senior housing overlay district, an SHOD designation, 7.14 acres. The negative declaration was adopted on March 20th, 2014, WA Route 9 LLC owner. I move that the planning board adjourn the site plan and aquatic resource permit hearing to November 16th, 2017, subject to a re-advertising of the public hearing for a revised submittal. Second. It's moved in second that the planning board adjourn the site plan and aquatic resource permit public hearing to Ju, to November 16th, 2017, subject to re-advertising of the public hearing for a revised submittal. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Okay. We are now going into, go into... At this point, I move that we suspend the rules. Second. Moved in seconded, we got a second? Okay. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. We suspend the rules in order for people to make comments on any other agenda items. So if there are any other agenda items, agenda items only, that anyone would like to speak to, now is your time. Okay, I move that we resume the rules. Second. Moved in second, call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Okay. As I said before, number one, Underhill Solar is taken off the agenda, they will reschedule, and I'm going to move up number six, Beacon Residential, 297 Violet Avenue. So we're going to do C6 first. He has to be in Fishkill, or someplace. He's got to be, he's got to be in two places at once tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got Beacon Residential, 297 Violet Avenue, it's a site plan review of a previously approved expired site plan to construct a new two-story residence of four units, 297 Violet Avenue, Zoned RM Residence Multi-Family District, .445 acres, unlisted action, Beacon Residential LLC owner. We had previously approved this, this project, and we're just here for a, to reapprove it since the site plan expired.
Yes.
Okay. Anything you want to add to that?
Basically, the plan remains unchanged. The only, the only significant difference is that we had to change around a note that said that the apron was going to remain, and we're, the DOT said that we should take it out and replace it, so there's a note that says that the, that the blacktop apron will be removed and, and built DOT, DOT spec.
Okay. I got it. I'm just looking for all the, bear with me one minute. Okay. Eric, is this yours?
Want to say something?
Yeah.
I'm supposed to say something. I, we were recommending the board approve it.
I've never seen Eric get a loss for words.
I got a pretty good laugh, Eric, I admit.
Okay. Let's see. I'm going to go around, you start with Carl.
I have nothing further, I just wanted to double-check that he was not changing architecture, so the entrances are still protected from the weather with that overhang.
Yes.
So, good to go.
Okay, Ben?
Nothing.
Nope, I'm fine, thanks.
Good to go.
Peter? No? Okay.
The, the-
Andy? Anybody else? Cole? Cole? Questions? No? Eric? Eric, Eric's silent. Yeah, yeah.
I move that the planning board determine that it retains its role as secret lead agency for the environmental review of this project as an unlisted action, in the absence of any prior objection from any involved agency.
It's moved in seconded, that the planning board determine that retain its role as a secret lead agency for the environmental review of this project as an unlisted action, in the absence of any prior objection by any involved agency. It's moved in second, and call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
I move that the planning board waive the site plan public hearing for this project in accordance with Town Code Section 210-151 Sub-D, on the basis that the site plan as presented is unchanged from the site plan approved by the board on December 17th, 2015, and that the board's review of the project indicate that current site and neighborhood conditions remain unchanged.
Second. It's moved in seconded by Ben. Okay. That the planning board waive the site plan public hearing for this project in accordance with Town Code 510-151D, on the basis that the site plan as presented is unchanged from the site plan approved by the board on December 17th, 2015, and that the board's review of the project indicate that current site and neighborhood conditions remain unchanged. And I guess the only thing I would say is with the addition to the DOT requirement that, that-
The DOT, the DOT requirement.
That they're going to do, okay? Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
I move that the planning board reaffirm the secret negative declaration previously adopted by the board on June 2nd, 2015, on the basis that the proposed site plan application and current environmental conditions remain substantially the same, and not significantly different from those considered on June 2nd, 2015.
Second. It's moved in seconded by Rocco, that the planning board reaffirm the secret negative declaration previously adopted by the board on June 2nd, 2015, on the basis that the proposed site plan application and current environmental conditions remain substantially the same, and not significantly different from those considered on June 2nd, 2015. And call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
And I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Beacon Residential LLC Multi-Family Site Plan, subject to the following, one through five, one through six, no, six, including architecture, plus addition of the DOT right away. Change.
Second. Moved in seconded, that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Beacon Residential LLC Multi-Family Site Plan, subject to the following, one through six, and again, addition to the comment about the requirement from the DOT. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
I move that the planning board reissue architectural review approval for the samples and renderings as presented on April 21st, 2016, subject to resubmittal of the same samples and renderings if not found on file by staff.
Okay. Second. Reissue architectural review approval for the samples and renderings as presented on April 21st, 2016, subject to resubmittal of the same samples and renderings if not found on file by staff. And call a question, all those in favor?
Question, I have a question, and that is, do we have, does the planning department have the samples on file?
To be honest, I, I, there's a large pile of things in the deadroom downstairs, and I didn't have a chance to look this week, but I suspect it's probably there.
I gave it to them on an eight-and-a-half by 11 card, the samples, last time, so it should be in a folder.
Right, but if we need, if we need to get them again, you can provide it.
I can provide them.
Okay. Thank you. We have enough material down there to build a house, I think.
Yeah, so, probably are used to mine as a house.
And call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Hey. Go.
Thank you.
Now don't let this one expire.
We won't. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Drive carefully.
I will.
Okay. Plan review number two, Raymond Avenue School redevelopment plan, planning board to declare lead agency consent, recommendation to the town board on zoning, there's text and map amendments and site plan review regarding creation and designation of a new anchor project district, and a two-phase mixed-use development, including 172 apartments and 16,200 square feet of commercial space, 110 hotel rooms, open area, 351 parking spaces. The site redevelopment would convert the former Arthur May School to 44 apartments, construct three, two three-story buildings on the ground, of ground-floor retail, and upper-story residential use, two four-story residential buildings, and in the second phase, one five-story building with 110 hotel units and commercial area. 25 Raymond Avenue and 31 Raymond Avenue's owned ATC Arlington Town Center, 6.9 acres and .43 acres respectively. Unlisted action, PAZ Management Inc., Contract Vendee, Arlington Grade School and Arlington Central School District owners. Okay, and for this application, Mr. Finelli has recused himself, so he will be sitting here, and he will not make, making any comments. Okay.
Hi. First, can we do a check, are you guys live on the screen down there? Do you see?
We were.
We had it up.
Way.
You were.
It was a minute ago.
It's your pretty buildings.
I also want you to see the pretty buildings. Why don't we put one of the pretty buildings up instead of the second site, can't Amy?
It was up for a couple- Check your connection? It was up for a couple of seconds.
Yeah, it was up initially.
Is your cable plugged in?
Just unplugged and replugged. Let's see. Anything? All right.
That's why we brought boards.
That's why we brought boards. So, good evening, everybody, thank you for allowing us to present in front of you. My name is Jacob Recus, I'm from POS Management, which is, we are the Contract Vendee based in the town of Poughkeepsie. I'm here with Stuart Messenger and Amy Haight from Chasen, and also I should mention who are serving as our project engineers. And I should mention, we've also engaged an architectural firm named Balzer and Tuck, who apologize that they can't be here tonight, they have an offsite scheduled for quite some time, while that's being worked on. I'd like to talk to you guys about the big picture, we're here to talk about 25 Raymond Avenue, which is a 6.8 acre site on the corner of Raymond and the Arterial. We've been working on the site for quite some time, and are, are very excited about the project that we are developing. Our, after I talk about the big picture, Stu will go through the procedural items, and Amy can show you the actual site plan, the conceptual site plan that we're talking about. From the big picture, what we're trying to accomplish with the site is to create a mixed-use development in the downtown Arlington Town Center and Arlington BID, that will help bring, that will help extend the retail corridor along Raymond Avenue from Vassar College all the way to the Arterial and, and really connecting to Main Street. Create new residential units that will bring, bring new units that haven't been online in, in quite some time. Create activity in that area, bring, bring people, a destination that they actually want to, that they want to pursue and, and enjoy in the downtown Arlington Town Center. Our overall project is divided into two phases. Phase one includes 172 apartments with 12,000 square feet of retail space. Phase two includes a 110 key hotel with an additional 4,200 square feet of retail space. And that's the, the big picture, and I'll turn it over to Stu.
Thanks, Jacob. The project is, is in the Arlington Town Center zoning district. The project that Jacob has described in terms of his intents is, is we think generally compatible with the design guidelines and the objectives of the Arlington Town Center zoning district, but for two parts, one relating to density, and the second relating to height. The objective of creating kind of a, of a focus of energy and activity requires more density and more height than the underlying zoning district allows. So, in order to enable this project to move forward, we submitted a petition to the town board, we'll just use the boards, we, that's, we brought them, but thanks for trying, oh, of course, as I say.
As you say that.
As I say.
Okay. We got one. We got them all, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so in order to achieve the objective, Jacob's objective, and to address the, the issues that we have with the zoning, we submitted a zoning petition to the town board to amend both the text and the map to enable this project, and we went through a couple of iterations of how best to do that. We looked at both an overlay district within the Arlington Town Center zoning, and we looked, and we actually submitted to the town board a standalone district. We've since had further conversations with staff, and the thinking is, on the part of the town board, that a better way to accomplish this is through simply a text amendment that allows this use and creates the necessary area and bulk standards to allow it to go forward. So we have a meeting scheduled next week with staff and consultants to talk about the mechanics of that, and we'll, we'll likely be amending our petition to reflect whatever we decide at that meeting. But in substance, the project that, that we're here in front of you tonight, we think is ready to go forward, we just have to tweak the particular mechanism. As I think you all are aware, the town board likes to understand the consequences of a, of a zoning action before they approve it, and so they said to us, when you submit the zoning text, the zoning amendment, we also want you to submit a site plan, and go forward in parallel with the site plan review process as you're working on the zoning amendment. And they allowed us to do that because frankly, we reached a place where they liked the project. We had several meetings with the town board, we presented some initial concepts, and in the initial concept, we didn't keep the Raymond Avenue school, and the town, and we, and we also had some other, some other conversations about the way the frontage along Raymond Avenue would look, the, the pretty picture that we now have in front of you, is a result of the discussions with the town board in terms of the physical layout of the Raymond Avenue frontage, and as you, as you've seen on the site plan, if you've looked at our submission, we're now keeping the Raymond Avenue school, and trying to reflect some of that architecture in the architecture of the remainder of the project. So, we're here because we think we, we got a project that the town board told us that they liked, and said, go see the planning board. So, we, we've submitted to the, to the town board, in addition to the zoning amendment, we've submitted to them a long-form environmental assessment form. We're in the process of doing a traffic study, we're going to be making a submission to SHPO for a consistency review on historic and archaeological resources. So, in terms of actions tonight, the only action that we're asking you to take is to agree to the town board serving as lead agency, and they've circulated their intent to serve as lead agency to you. But beyond that, we're also here to get your input on our initial concept plan. The concept plan, since we've submitted, has undergone- as lead agency to you, but beyond that, we're also here to get your input on our initial concept plan. The concept plan, since we've submitted, has undergone some revisions, we're in the process of tweaking it and changing it as we further revise it. As Jacob mentioned, we're working with Balzer Tuck Architecture Architects, and so we've made some, some changes to the buildings, but in substance, what, what you're, what you see here contains the main elements. We are going to submit a full set of site plans on September 25th, so we'll be in front of you for your October meeting. That full set will be only for phase one at this time, and so while we've given you the concept for a first and a second phase, we're only going into detailed site plan on first phase for your October meeting. And so I think with that, I'm going to let Amy very briefly walk you through the elements, and then we'll try to get your feedback and answer questions.
Can you hear me? So, the site plan is, as was stated before, the Arthur S. May Schools is located here. The plan maintains the Arthur S. May School in its current location. There's two proposed buildings up near the frontage of Raymond Avenue, they are each approximately 6,000 square feet, on the first, every floor is 6,000 square feet, the first floor would be all retail, 16 residential units in each on the second and third floors. The proposed building in the back would be entirely residential. The existing entrance is maintained with where it is now, aligns with Davis Avenue, give or take. We're providing ample parking, there's a proposed underground parking garage underneath the residential building in the rear. The landscaping will be, ample green space will be provided with the landscaping. We're proposing underground stormwater management, we've been doing soil testing, we completed that yesterday, so we'll provide a stormwater design in future submissions. So, the, the view you're seeing here, this is the Raymond Avenue School right now, so the, the two buildings in the front, you would have a view like this, however, these would be lower than the existing school.
By how mu, by how much? Do you know? Like, just a, just an estimate?
A few feet as, as it currently stands. What we're really targeting, and the view shed is, is important to us, so what we're trying to create is some sense of a courtyard feel that, that honors the history of the school, the, as, as Stu mentioned, originally, we actually looked at the site and, and I'm not sure if anybody followed the original plans, but when we first started to look at the site, we looked at the school and it has two significant hurdles, the location of the building on the site is a massive challenge for flow, and in order to bring the density that we're trying to do to make the project sustainable. So, when we looked at it once again, and we actually challenged the architects, who should be here to, to take the, the credit for this, we, we challenged them to find a way that can keep the school and still have it maintain its presence, but also get the density that we would need to make, make the building. So, it's, what they targeted is, they targeted the apex of the roof, there's the cupola above, which kind of, sort of brings your visual all the way to the top, and it's lower than the, so the rooftop of this building is lower than the rooftop of the, I'm sorry, the, the top floor of the front building is lower than the top floor of the school, the roof of the front building is lower than the roof of the school, I don't have the exact numbers right now, we can do that.
That's great, that's what I was worried about.
But the, the other thing to point out is that, and I think Balzer Tuck's done a really nice job on this, is creating kind of the view corridor into the central part of the school, and that, that picture really illustrates that, I, I think that's a real pleasing feature.
Agreed.
Does this, is this the entire site development, or is this a phase?
This is phase one, so phase two would be-
Phase, phase two is, is a hotel potentially, but we're a long way from that, we don't have a flag, and so there's kind of no point in, in giving you a plan for something that we don't know what they would want to-
We're just curious where it would be in that slot right there.
In that general area.
That's what I figured, okay.
I just, I, I see, I see you have a, a dog park there, what about a people park?
There is a, there is, the potential for a recreation area for people.
Did he say that?
People park.
In the same area, in the same location as, you know, in the same general area as the dog park.
I mean, you have the, the area above the parking garage between apartment buildings as well as a kind of a park.
Green space area.
Green space area.
Correct.
And functionally, the space in front operates as a public courtyard, remember, we have retail there, and so the idea, you know, this is kind of small retail, coffee, laundry, bakery, in and out, and so we think it's a place that people would come and sit in during our six months of good weather and enjoy it.
Do you currently have companies that are interested in this space?
Well, so our, our first target is to make sure that we have a site plan that actually works, we're softly floating the idea, we've spoken with a number of brokers, and there seems to be a lot of excitement, there's, it's a, it's a destination, I mean, I grew up here, I, this is an area that I want to go to, when I bring people around, I, I want to go to there, there's good retail there, but most of the retail space that exists is in old buildings and smaller spaces, so we've met with the bid a couple times to talk to them about, you know, what are the needs from a retail perspective, and they've talked to us about having bigger spaces, newer spaces, spaces that are not as unique, we'll call them, and so we don't have any individual tenants lined up, but there's certainly been strong interest that, yeah, there's a big need for, for this kind of a space with this kind of a visibility.
Sounds good.
Can I jump in here? I'm sorry, I'm actually, I'm doing double duty, I've got to scoot in a couple of minutes for another meeting. Just wanted to also note, the, the visual here, this very dramatic sort of view corridor to, to the school is, is, is great, and the, you know, the style of the architecture to both sides, it evokes some of the architecture that you see on the Vassar campus and sort of brought that in, but there's another view corridor as well, and that's the main corridor down to the, to the apartments in the back, and, yeah, you've got, I mean, this is, this is to my mind as dramatic, important as the view just immediately off of Raymond Avenue of the school. So, you know, I, I'm kind of highlighting this because this project has been in, you know, and kind of underway for about a year now, a little over a year, I've spoken often with, with Jacob, with Ozzy, with Stu and Amy, and the way that this, and of course, I agree with you, I think that the Balzer Tuck has done a great job of sort of bringing the architecture forward, but it's, it's really evolved, and the, the developers have really, they've, they've listened, they've listened to the town board, they've listened to the planning board in some previous conversations, as well as staff, and so I, I mean, this is, this is an extremely important project, not only because of what it represents to, my opinion, to, you know, a very good opportunity to save an important historic building, at least in terms of historic to the town, but it's in the heart of Arlington, it's a seven-acre piece, you're not going to find a piece like this in Arlington, which is why the, which is why we've taken pains to kind of step back and make sure that we're, we're doing it right. It's, it's also one of the reasons too, I don't know if the board members have, have really kind of thought about it, but in terms of the procedure here, over the past, what, half dozen years or so, the process for rezoning with the town board has been, the town board has been deferring to the planning board on, on the seeker, so the planning board has actually stepped into the role of lead agency, which is fine, it's, it's procedurally, and that, that's all very important. But kind of to highlight the importance of this project, and, and what it can mean for the Arlington Town Center area, the town board in this instance decided that it wants to be the lead agency, which is, again, procedurally fine, but I think it also sends a message to all of us, just the importance that, that the town board attaches to this project, and, you know, again, it's not to minimize, none of us think this isn't important, but from a procedural standpoint, with the, with the town board in the role of lead agency, it's, it's really critically important to make sure that we have a lot of communication between the planning board and the town board and the, and the developers and all the other agencies involved, so that's why we're following the process that we are in this instance, if anybody had any questions about that, because that's not the usual path we've been following the past few years, but it's an appropriate one, and I think it really highlights the, the town board's interest in making sure that we get this right.
And if I can just add one more comment, just to thank the town staff, town leadership, county staff, there's been a lot of conversations to get to this point, and, and the feedback has been helpful, there've been some twists and turns, but I think that we want this to be a project that's a win-win for everybody and that really advances the Arlington Town Center. Thank you for that.
Rocco, you had a question?
Okay, a couple of things. One is, of your 172 apartments, what can you tell us about the mix between one, two, three, whatever?
Sure, so, sure, so, the, the plans are for a mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. In deciding to keep the school, we had to, and we're working through this, we had to adjust the, the plan, there's going to be more studios and one bedrooms, trying to highlight the, the tall ceilings and large windows that the school has to kind of create a loft space, I'm not allowed to say young professional design space, but the entry-level professional for folks that are looking for something maybe a little bit more unique and, and cooler in a downtown area.
Well, what would be the size approximately of a one, of a, of a studio?
So-
Since there's going to be more of those.
Of the, of the, well, the ones and the twos are targeted from 800 to 1,200 square feet roughly.
Okay.
With some variations that are not yet defined, so this is a, a work in process. The studios are, and this is one of the challenges that we've been trying to figure out, is how to make the project viable while keeping the school, how to keep, get enough units in there, and, and the architects are, are designing, so the studios in the school are going to be smaller, which will hopefully feel larger based on the windows and the heights and, and everything. Does that answer the question?
Well, kind of, but you still don't have a, an idea on a studio.
Our target goal is to be 500 to 700 square feet, but-
Okay, secondly, on your garage in the back, you've got 48 parking spaces, is that all on one level in each building, or will there be two stories?
So, actually, what you're looking at is, is one podium, it's at ground level, so as you would drive in, it's not underground, it's at ground level.
Okay.
Right, which is, which would be one podium all the way across, and then the residences would be built up above it.
Four stories.
Four stories of wood, wood frame construction above that.
Okay, so the parking would all be on one level, and then the apartments would be above that.
That's exactly right.
Parking is really all behind here.
Right, that's what I, okay.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I thought, all right. And that's 48 per-
So, currently, there are 96 residences in the back, and-
Right.
We had 96, the, we're tar, we're trying to achieve 96 parking spaces in that structure, we're getting close.
And the total parking spaces was 365, I think, or something like that? How much was it?
274, I believe, in the, on the entire site.
274, okay.
350?
350. I, I thought it was about 300.
Yeah, we have a 351. That count is for phase two with the hotel, so we're in the 200% range.
The important piece being we're compliant with your parking requirement.
1.5 or something like that. Is the requirement 1.5 per unit?
I thought, I thought we were hitting the 1.5.
We're hitting over, in, in fact, when, when we designed the site, Stu's correct, the, the number that we were hitting is, we're over the code, and what's interesting about the Arlington Town Center code is that there's some comments about not over parking because we're trying to create this town center feel.
Right.
So, that was the balance, we're over the number, and we want to try and-
We wouldn't mind, we wouldn't mind having a few less, but we're, when, when you see the, when you see the formal submission, we'll have a, a firmer number.
There's always visitors, the-
Yeah, fair enough.
Right, there's visitors, and there's also, most families have at least one car, most have two. Even one person can have, he's got four or five himself, but anyway. But I like the, I mean, so far in concept, I think it's, it's, it's quite dramatic, and hopefully, you know, vary too much from what you have down here.
With the, I know you said the hotel would be phase two, but so the pad, are you looking to make that shovel ready?
No, no, not at this time.
The, yeah, I could see from phase, you know, phase two is, you have to redo the whole entryway, and remove the crosswalk, and redo the crosswalk potentially, and all that, all that Raymond Avenue has to be done to get the hotel in there, so, so I see why that's a separate phase.
Correct, exactly.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to point out that during the meeting that we had with the DOT, that was one of their points of concern, was the relocation of the entryway to the, for, that's going to be required for phase two, and the impact that that could have on the intersection nearby, so that's, I think that may be one of the issues that you're kind of waiting to resolve for phase two.
Correct.
Yeah.
Would there be a left-hand turn allowed from Davis? I mean, if you're going, what is that, north on Raymond?
No, it's, it's a right only now, it would stay, it would stay right only coming out.
Okay, so people to, to get in here would have to go around the block?
You go around the block.
Okay, and you've done traffic studies, or not?
You go left in, I'm sorry.
Just to clarify, you can enter by making a left turn, you can't exit from the site and make a left, so-
If you're going, if you're going north on Raymond, you can make a left.
That's correct, yeah, you can't make a left out.
But it's right out only.
If you want to get to the arterial, you would turn right and get to the groundabout, and then loop out.
Okay, and you've done a traffic flow study, or you plan to do that?
Oh, it's underway, yeah, and we, and we plan to have it done prior to the 25th.
Is that left turn out only when the hotel's there, or is that starting at?
No, there, it would be left in, left in allowed now, there'd be no left out, period, in phase one, yeah.
That's the way it is today.
Yeah, that's the way it is today.
Okay, okay, I didn't notice. You done, Rocco? Just had a couple of comments.
You have more, you have more questions?
I have one more question.
Oh, you, oh.
No, I'm good, go ahead, Brian.
Your demo for, your demographic for the apartments, you're looking at, what is it, what do you?
Well, so for the school piece, we're, we're certainly trying to target something that doesn't really exist, which is the twenties and thirties new construction units, and, and I don't think there's a lot of that, so that's the big hurdle that we're trying to, to really make sure it exists. Along Raymond Avenue and towards the back, we're talking about clean, nice, new apartments that have amenities, and so folks who might be downsizing from houses, single adults who might be looking for a place that has, that you can walk outside and get a cup of coffee down the street, and as somebody who grew up here, I mean, I think when, you know, I'll, I'll share where, my, my family's been here for 35 years, we talk about this a lot, my mother wants a place to, to downsize from her house, I want a place that I can walk down the street and get a cup of coffee and hang out and see people, and I think we talk a lot about how this site can achieve both of those things, that's the goal.
The units in the school, will they have a loft kind of feel, it'll be high ceilings?
Yeah, 12-foot ceilings.
So, they give it, so that, even though they might, the square footage might be less, it'll have the feel of a loft type of thing?
That's exactly right, so we, we initially didn't think that the school would work, we walked back in and, and started to see, I mean, that the spaces feel larger than the square footage sounds because of the height.
There's no intent to, I mean, obviously, there may be some migration, but there's no intent to go after the college?
If the college students want to move in, then that would be wonderful, but I think that Vassar College has a, historically has targeted their students to stay on campus, I think that we're, we certainly want to be available to anybody who, who would want to use it, yeah.
Now, I have seen schools converted into condos and, and into apartments, and it's worked quite well, actually.
I just have a couple of questions, when you're doing your traffic study, is there going to be a component that takes a look at walkability and use of transit and parking scenarios, because I believe in some of the offline meetings, there was discussion of that some of the population that might be either owning or renting here, you know, might be jumping off the train and using a zip car or some other method, and not necessarily having a car and all that, so I think it's worth considering that, even though I know we all have a concern about how many cars people have. And the, and the other thing I, I have to say is, been reading for years about the shortage of rental in this area of all types, market rate, workforce, small units, and I, I'm glad to hear that you're doing smaller units, because for some of us going between, say, our bachelor's and our master's, we don't have a ton of money, maybe we're waiting tables and doing an internship, a small apartment is just the right thing, you want to drop your stuff and go somewhere, you're not there to hang out forever, so, I think that's a good design element, and I hope there are plenty of rentals.
I appreciate that, Sully.
Good.
Yeah, I got a few comments, I mean, number one is, I've heard about the plans that, as they've been evolving, so I'm, I'm happy you were able to work around and keep the school as it is.
you were able to work around and keep the school as it is, as your primary plan here. Historic society is happy with that as well, I am sure. Number two, it looks like you're starting to add some amenities in there, the pool in the back, the dog park, et cetera. If you do wind up, you know, and you're targeting the young, the new yuppies, the new millennials and the downsizers, but if there's some kids that move in there, you might consider a playground or something in the, between the apartments. Considering that target age group also, you don't forget the infrastructure for bicycles, some, maybe some storage in the underground garage, or, and certainly maybe some bike rack out near the retail area somewhere.
And charging station.
And I was just gonna say that.
A what station? A charging station?
Electric charging station. Or so.
Good point.
I mean, it's, some of the hotels have added them in the area as well, as electric cars become more common, we'll see. Well, it depends on the price of gas, too.
Maybe Tesla will build you a charging station, because they're trying to populate...
They are, they are trying to double the number of charging stations in the next couple of years.
I personally haven't been so impressed with those, but I certainly think you're the, the idea of bicycles, playground connection to zip, to zip cars, connection to buses is gonna be helpful.
Yeah, I was gonna reiterate Liz's comment, you know, leave one or two of those parking spaces for zip cars.
With your talk to the county, has there been any conversation of making a connection between the train station and?
So we, but we met with county planning, showed them the plans, they had some good feedback, which led to what we're showing you right here. We floated the idea of zip car, we're gonna reach out to them. There is a new bus line that either started two weeks ago or is about to start, which goes from the train station right by the property and to Vassar College, and so that is a huge step forward. I think when we think about this courtyard, when we think about the retail, you know, our hope is that this becomes a hangout destination, that you can stop off, get a cup of coffee on your way out the door. And then Uber getting approved is also, or not Uber, but Carriage, whatever the official term is, I think is a big step for projects like this. I mean, I think the zip car concept of somebody that can live there and not, maybe they don't use their car every day, but they can occasionally.
I mean, Marista is founded, their students are using them quite a bit, so they're adding more. It started with two of them, I think, and they've added more, I believe.
Very exciting.
I'm not sure if Vassar has any at the moment, but...
I love your idea about the bikes also.
And, and I, this is kinda what I pictured when I first heard it was for sale, some apartments behind, some retail up front, and, but I, I think your architect has done a great job tying it into, it's like the Vassar Alumni House and other things in the area. And the view shed of the, of the school is working out very nicely, I think.
Thank you.
I did have a couple of questions on the, on the new zoning code. One, I think in the zoning comparison table, I did see a reference to, to drive-throughs. Is that something you're considering for any of these retail? Doesn't look like it's, there's a space for a drive-through, but I don't know why that was in the zoning code, because typically in dense center, it's not allowed.
I think the ultimate goal was to leave the flexibility for Phase Two, depending on what may or may not come, whether it's a coffee shop that might wanna drive through, something like that.
If it doesn't turn out to be the hotel, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, so we've started the conversation about the hotel, but it's out of our hands to some extent, so...
And I'll point out, the existing ATC district has a drive-through overlay, so there is a provision.
You just have to, but this is making more as of right, and that is what I was concerned with. But it's the town board's decision to approve or disprove it, I just...
I think that's for future discussion.
And similar thing, and similar thing, you know, you're building to five stories max here, but the code has 12-story height limit, and that seems excessive for the area to me. I know there's a nine-story apartment there already, but 12 just seems a little high to me.
Certainly with wood construction, you can't go to 12.
You can't, well, no, you can't go to nine either. I think it's like four, four, maybe five is the limit.
Four on a podium, you can do.
Thank you. Rocco had another question?
Yeah, I have one more here. With the height of these buildings, especially the apartments, are they going to be walk-ups, or are they gonna have elevators?
Elevators.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I think we can move along.
Well, I'll make a motion, I can make a motion, that the planning board consent to designation of the Town of Poughkeepsie Town Board as lead agency for the secret review of the Anchor Project zoning amendments and the Arthur May Anchor Project.
Second.
We moved the second, that the planning board consent to designation of the Town of Poughkeepsie Town Board as lead agency for the secret review of the Anchor Project zoning amendments and Arthur May Anchor Project. Call a question, ales in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
I moved that, I moved that the planning board defer action on the proposed Anchor Project zoning amendments and Arthur May Anchor Project, subject to more detailed site plans and other information on the project, and subject to the following, one through two. That includes comments from the planning board tonight on all the various things we discussed, from zip cars to other facilities.
To dog, to people parks.
The people park, the bike racks, the charging stations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded, okay. We moved the second, the planning board defer action on the proposed Anchor Project zoning amendments and Arthur May Anchor Project, subject to more detailed site plans and other information on the project, subject to the following, one and two. Call a question, ales in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, you're off and running.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
I thought we were just seeing you at, in October. Plan review number three, Over rocker Warehouse Project, site plan review of a proposal to upgrade existing incomplete building for warehouse use, construct three loading docks in access to them, and modify existing access road for two-way traffic. 70C Over rocker Road zoned IH heavy industry district, 5.14 acres. Type two action, Over rocker Road Realty LLC, Inc., owner. Thank you.
We gotta tip you? We have to tip you?
Okay.
So give me, there.
This is a good fall, yeah.
That's, that's pretty good.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Bill Rhodey, I'm with Rhodey, Circa, and Andrews. My client next to me is Jacob Lorenz. Very nice gentleman, I must add. We've been working on this project now for about six months now, right?
About.
And we're very interested in trying to take an old warehouse that never got a planning board, never got a, probably got planning board approval, but couldn't find any records on it.
It never got built, it never got finished.
And was, got a building permit but never got a CO, never got finished. And as many of you, everybody knows where this is, right? You recognize that people just go there and they go ice, or skating, or they put graffiti on the building and stuff like that. So what we'd like to do is to renovate the whole building, make it into a nice warehouse. The traffic coming into the building is about, was it about six trucks maximum?
We have what, I'll just, we have two UPS trucks come in every day, one to pick up and one to deliver. And then we have maybe one or two other trucks that would come by, not on a daily basis, but, you know, to pick up pallets or more, or other materials. We have about, presently, we have about four containers that come in a month from overseas. Hopefully and eventually, there'll be between five and eight a month, which means they come in and we empty them and they, they're taken away because they cost money when they're, when they're just sitting idly. And that's basically it, that there's, that's all the traffic that there would be from trucks.
And then the materials are warehoused there and then it's distributed?
And distributed via UPS. Via UPS to, we're importers from overseas and we sell online all of our products, so they get this, you know, they just go via truck to, you know...
What kind of products do they might have?
We import many products, we have toys, we have home decor items, we have office supplies, school supplies, disposable items, napkins, plates, cups, et cetera, stationery. We have several, you know, different, different products.
Okay.
And all are sold, you know, we don't, all are sold, shipped via UPS, everything goes through UPS.
So nothing perishable, that you need refrigeration?
Nothing, no, no.
What size containers?
I beg your pardon?
What size containers would be coming in, 20 feet, 40?
40s.
40?
Yeah.
UPS trucks, are they gonna be the trailer?
No, not the trailer, they're not, it's not a trailer. No, it's just one of the, one of the bigger trucks.
So the trailer truck is basically the ones that brings the big container in?
That's right.
Maybe a...
Yeah, but that, you know, we're talking about four, five to eight a month, a month.
Yeah.
So there's not, you know, and they usually, you know, they usually, most of the time would come in two at a time, and, you know, one brings, one comes in one day, one comes in the other day, but that's the maximum usually for, that, you know, we can fit into this warehouse, let's put it this way.
Gotcha.
Now, would these be goods for your sale on your website?
On our website also, but on Amazon and on Jet, and on, you know, all the channels that we sell, yeah.
But just for yourself, you're not gonna be, will you be supplying others?
No.
Okay.
No.
Before we get to the question, I need just Eric to his commentary.
I'm sorry. That's okay, we're all excited about this, so that's good. Hey Liz?
The, for tonight, the action for the board tonight is to identify the project as a type two action, it doesn't need secret review, so we're recommending the board acknowledge that fact, and then to defer it, there's a couple of things that need to happen. It's a, it is subject to a special use permit, so we need to get that application in, which has a mandatory public hearing. So there's a few questions that the engineers generated, staff have generated, so we'd like to just get some of those questions answered, particularly about things like the design of the road was a little bit ambiguous, we'd like to just get those on the plans clear, a little bit clearer, and then we could proceed with that next month, or the next, with the next submittal.
Sounds fair. Yeah, on the drawings, we indicate that the road is gonna be redone all the way out to be 24 feet wide, so we can make it into a two-way travel, so that, there's a note in the drawings that says that. We also did meet with abilities first, and you notice on the colored rendering you have in front of you, there is some screening there, and that was their only concern, was to have some screening there, so there wouldn't be any, you know, cut down the visual impact, so to speak, between the school and the warehouse.
And this is a private road?
This is a private road, it's owned by this gentleman. If you look in the drawing here, all the colored part in color, that's their property. So they own the road going in front of abilities first, where abilities first has a parking area and stuff like that. So where, that road is being reconverted into a, that will stay one-way in front of them, but be two-way coming down to the loading dock.
That works for me. Sounds good. And they plan on repaving all the dark area you're showing?
There's gonna be a road that's gonna be proper all the way through, because we're worried about, you know, we got a lot of school buses coming out of here.
Yes.
We gotta make sure it's safe for the school people, as well as, you know, the students and so forth, and to travel.
Gotcha.
So only the property that we own is gonna be affected here.
Sure, no, I understand.
Currently, at the entrance to this road, there's an abilities first sign, even though it's not really the access to abilities first.
Correct.
It could be confusing. Will it be clearly marked that this is not for abilities first and it's, you know... Well, there's a sign that says next exit for abilities first.
So that first sign says that abilities first entrance is the next?
Next entrance.
That's correct. So that's the existing sign now.
So they'll, they'll maintain their one-way circulation through?
That's correct, yes.
Well, let me just go around in order, that way everybody can get their questions.
Yep.
Is that okay? We'll start with Ben.
That was, that was my question.
Oh, okay. Good.
I think I've, so far, up to this point, I think I've asked the questions that I was curious about, Noah's, the container sizes, the amount of, of the traffic going in there. I went up there, it looks like you've got a fair amount of work yet to do there. Lots of work to do. Lots of work. But the potential is clearly there.
Thank you. And plus, it's a, you know what, to get that finished and making it look good and all that, that's a great thing, just, it's a good thing. You're right, positive. Ryan?
I have nothing, that's all I was gonna say, thanks for taking an eyesore and turning it nice again.
Thank you.
And, and we would appreciate if you would give us a chance to start moving on, getting the eyesore as soon as possible, because, you know, we have, you know, we, there's financing involved, and if we can start moving maybe on the interior, or, you know, something that does not affect the site, that would, that would be great.
Are you operating?
Conditional, obviously conditional, but if we can get that, that would give us a chance to start, start moving, it would save a lot of money and save a lot of time.
This is second location for you, or?
No, we presently rent about 20,000 square feet in Haskell, New Jersey, and we're gonna move in in here and probably we have, you know, we're gonna, there's gonna be additional employment, and we plan to make the exterior look nice, and plan to have the whole thing look presentable.
Good.
So, you know, that's, that's, we're anxious to start moving on it.
For the construction phase, we'd like to, you know, be able to bring trucks in through the road where we show it, because the old way, they had a path, if you look down below the bottom side of the warehouse where it says existing path.
Right.
That's where they used to travel with their trucks to the old loading dock, but the problem is that we have overhead wires there, and we don't want, I said, I don't wanna have any construction vehicles going along that path, I'd rather use where we show the road, so if there's gonna be a construction road going down there, like a construction entrance?
Well, that's my question.
If it's like a temporary road until we get final approval.
That's not gonna be...
Will this go away?
Pardon me?
Will that, the construction road go away? Because the last one... The construction road will be, will be the same place where the road is right now. And I can see that during the construction. Like Phase One, Phase Two of the road construction. But afterward, will this path still be there?
I wasn't listening.
The existing path?
It's a gravel path, we're just gonna be... Right, no, I saw it, but I mean, it's, it's a place where cars might go. No. We could always, we could always take... We could always take the entrance away from it.
So the plan will have to indicate that that'll be, the entrance will be removed and grassed over or whatever?
Engrided and... We could do that, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And what is the potential employment? Additional employment?
But, but, we think up between eight and 10, eventual.
Did you call anything?
Obviously, one more question.
Okay.
Is that the only residence that butts up to the property? And then there's rail trail, right? Is that all I see? Am I reading that right?
There's, um...
That's correct.
To the left, there are three residences on Over rocker Road that back up on their property.
Okay.
And then if you were going out their driveway on the right-hand side, there is a residence. I think there's a couple more residences between that driveway and the next driveway for abilities first.
Okay.
Here?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. One, it's a housekeeping item, and that is when you submitted the combined application form, you provided a copy of the deed, but it's the incorrect property. You purchased two properties, one with 70D Over rocker Road. The property we're considering is 70C Over rocker Road, so what you'll have The property we're considering is seventy C Over Rocker Road, so what you'll have to do is just again, as a matter of housekeeping, submit the copy of the the correct deed.
Oh, the deed?
Yes.
Okay.
Seventy C, not seventy D.
Okay.
Um, I'm glad to see that you're gonna widen that road, because we measured it the other day, it's sixteen and a half feet wide.
That's pretty great.
And I have to assume that you have a forty-three thousand square foot building, even though you're gonna have estimated truck traffic, maybe three or four vehicles, uh, if you purchase the forty-three thousand square foot building, you have another thirteen acres in the back. God willing, you know, maybe at future date, you'll be able to build another building.
Bring the spot in the back.
You certainly will need, uh, you know, road that will be. And that's, oh, the other thing is, I'm sure as you know, this was at one time a superfund site.
We're aware of it.
If you could provide us with some documentation, anything from the DEC, you know, a no further action letter, whatever that you, anything that you have, because when we go through the secret process, you know, we just need some documentation to say, basically, case closed, the door is shut, if you could do that.
That's on the chase of property, it's not on our property.
Well, actually, uh, you know, there were wells, I think, some pumping stations on this property.
We have monitoring wells.
Monitoring wells?
Right, to make sure that it doesn't creep over to our property.
Okay, so we just wanna make sure that everything is in, whatever they required is in working condition.
Okay, yeah, it is, 'cause it's inspected once a year.
Okay, terrific, you can just get get a letter or something so we can verify that, so we can get through the secret process.
Good point.
Thank you.
Bill, I'm happy to.
And good luck.
Thank you.
If you want, I have to follow up with me on on like turning this around, I don't see anything earth shaking here in terms of the.
We'd like to try and get this completed in October.
Yeah.
At our next meeting, if you get all the applications in.
I'll have to show up to the office tomorrow morning.
Yeah, you need a special use permit, which we which we grant, so you used to have to go back to zoning, but now we do that.
Right.
So if you work with with Brian, Eric, we can hopefully get all the everything we need and get all the questions answered, so when it comes October, we can get you out the door and ready to go.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
We're gonna try.
Comment.
Thanks.
Just one last thing here.
Sure.
You said up to maybe eight to ten employees?
Yeah.
I assume it it I assume you've got enough.
I beg your pardon, I didn't hear.
I I said, I assume that you've got enough room here to add the parking spaces.
Yes.
Because right now you only show six.
Six.
You're showing six right now.
We have six, and and there's additional, we have, I think, three bays for drug bays, so there's, you know, there's there's enough space in there, uh, you know, paved space where we need to keep another car, you know, there's not that much traffic. We I don't think we're gonna use three bays at a time, I don't just don't think so.
Counselor, you had a question?
Yes, can you just provide like on your next submission, copies of all easements that affect the property?
Okay.
That would be very helpful for myself.
Sure.
Rest of the planning board, thank you. And also, what's what's the status of the contract mandate situation? Did you, you actually purchased these?
Yeah, all we have, we all.
All properties?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
But as 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 housekeeping, as you mentioned before, um, when we we our contract was with with uh Over Rocker Road Realty LLC, but when it came to closing, we sold it to a to a different corporation and will provide you with that information.
With an assignment?
No, not an assignment, it was just, we decided to use another corporation to to uh to to buy the building.
Okay, so you're like.
And you will see that on the on the deed and on 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 everywhere.
Okay.
And is that the the current applicant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's all the same.
Carl?
I just noted it now.
Yep, I think you answered a lot of my questions already, I mean, there's some bad potholes on the road, but you're and the width of the road, you're fixing that.
Right.
One of my biggest concerns is the confrontation with abilities first, so I was wondering why you were putting the loading dock on that on the east end versus the west end of the building, uh, which should keep it away, but I think you've answered that, you didn't wanna get into power line right away issue.
Correct, and plus, we're gonna put, we're gonna put, uh, we're gonna put up trees on our side, so you know, so that, you know, it doesn't it doesn't interfere with with abilities.
We'll screen them.
Yeah, we'll screen, we'll probably try screening, so.
Screening plus, I mean, plus the way you've.
Yeah.
Done the traffic here, that'll, 'cause 'cause they they have several cars at a time sometimes and slow-moving people getting in and out of the front of their entrance.
But they're and they're in the back from us, it's just, you know, they they're trying, they, I mean, I've watched them unload these these, they're students and, you know, they're they're just behind, and as Bill has made the one way, you know, so they're, as long as they're, you know, their their sign is gonna be, we're gonna make sure that they go one way.
Yeah.
And you know, maybe even put a something, you know, we're gonna work, try to work it out, that it should, the message should be as clear as possible that they should not go in this way.
Yep, so that looks that looks good.
Yeah, we have a do not enter sign there.
You mentioned there the trap, the containers come in, and how long do the containers sit while you unload them, are they there for a couple days?
They're on the same day, no.
Oh, on one day?
They're costly, I mean, if they're not returned.
Okay, you get them in and unload them.
You take them in and unload, and you take and send them right away back.
Okay.
The next day they go back.
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
Well, okay.
Landscaping, you did that, I guess that's it then, I commend you for turning this old eyesore, as people say.
Thank you very much.
Into something useful.
Ben?
Thank you very much.
Good, okay, so we we we're glad you're here, and I'm just repeating what everybody said, but it's, this answered a lot of questions by providing us with with that, and I think you'll work well with abilities first, they're they're good people over there.
Get the pictures in the back to attach to it.
Yeah.
I did have, did have one more, was the county had a concern of, you know, the rail trails right there, so you gotta make sure runoff from anything you're doing does not.
We've got a buyer retention basin.
Get onto the rail trail and cause ice or whatever, so.
Okay, that's right, so.
I moved that the planning board.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a few questions about stormwater?
Yes.
Yeah, um, just, uh, I realize that the the area of disturbance is less than an acre, so you don't require a SWIP. Does that area of disturbance, does that include improvements to the the access road to widen it? Does that that area of disturbance number?
Of the, I mean, the road going out to?
Yeah, the wide of the main road.
Well, you got you got, you know, stone along there, so it's already disturbed, we're just gonna repave it.
Okay, all right, because, you know, I think one thing that everybody's concerned, would be concerned about is, you know, there's a, there's, we're obviously adding quite a bit of pavement here, so we don't wanna cause any problems for the rail trail, um, and we wanna make sure that, you know, we take a good look at the the stormwater. I'm curious, the buyer retention basin is shown on the existing plan, do you have any design for that as it exists now?
We guys surveyed for it.
Okay.
But we don't, we did not go through a design process, we're gonna be doing that though.
Okay, so you'll have to reevaluate that, okay.
Yeah, we gotta, 'cause it's all paved there, we gotta look at different runoff.
Right, okay, all right, just wanna make sure we take a good look at that, so, thank you.
But right now, right now, the county's had to adjust some pipes coming out the hill there, so so to make sure there's nothing pouring down there.
Also, you know, we, Ben and I looked at the driveway the other day, and if you just do the calculation of if you had to extend that road by eight feet, another eight feet of width, I don't think it's, even if it was three hundred feet, which I don't think it is, it's only twenty-five hundred square feet, I mean, it's really, in terms of adding impervious, it's really not remarkable. And 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 I think there's enough impervious added there to to be of any concern, I wouldn't think.
On the road, right, the real the real impervious that's being added, the real, where it really makes a difference is where the grass is being replaced by.
Sure.
Pavement, of course.
Yeah, the loading dock area.
Right, right, right.
All right, I moved that the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for a secret type two action pursuant to secret part six, seven, five, sub C, sub seven, and no further environmental review is required.
Second, second, sorry, I'm getting late.
Wake up, wake up.
Moved in second, the planning board determines that the proposal meets the criteria for a secret type two action pursuant to secret part six, seventeen dot five, sub C, sub seven, no further environmental review is required.
Yeah, that would be subject to, you know, some recommendation or documentation, you know, in terms of the remediation that was done there.
Um, the you can, you're entitled to ask that as a part of site plan review, and if if you anticipate adding to the conditions of approval, the usual, what you usually do, just to refer to the board's comments tonight, then I've taken some notes and I'll mention that among the list of items to follow up on.
All right, terrific, for site plan especially.
Good, so I'm gonna call a question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, one through ten.
Second.
Moved in second, call the question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Okay, off to a good start, so the pressure's on you to get everything in, so we can get a get this review coming.
Does that mean I gotta work seven days a week?
You may have to. Twenty-four hours a day.
Maybe eight days a week.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much.
We had two jigsups in a row, that's pretty good.
That's right, one without a yarmulke, one without a yarmulke. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you again.
Bill, if you miss, Bill, if you miss me tomorrow, I'll be in Monday. You could try to, you could try tomorrow, I have some meetings, but otherwise, Monday, either way, I'd be happy to talk with you, follow up.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Eric?
I just said I'm happy to follow up with you tomorrow or Monday.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Monday, you say? Monday would work better.
You got it.
Okay.
Next person?
Plan review number four, Modi, twenty-three Davis Avenue, new ophthalmology building. Planning board to declare lead agency intent and site plan review for a proposed two-story medical office building of eleven hundred, two hundred square feet, reconfiguration of parking, uh, on a site with an existing two, one-story medical building of twelve thousand five hundred square feet, twenty-three Davis Avenue's owned ATC Arlington Town Center, one point six four acres, uh, item, IDOM, Equities Inc., owner. Good evening. Let Mr. Berger start, I'm gonna start here. Have to sit and talk to him. Good evening, Joseph Berger, Berger Engineering for the applicant with Dr. Modi here, who is the applicant and owner of the current site. Basically, what we're planning to do is build a second building on the current site. Does this work? Well, should work. Give it a minute. Give it a second, one, two, three, takes a couple seconds, how's that? Working, huh? Existing building's right here off of Davis Avenue, this is Dollar over here, the parking right now wraps around, going back on to Davis, we're proposing to build a two-story building, fifty-six hundred square feet, back in the wooded area that's over to the northeast corner of the site, which is right behind the hotel, the little motel that's off of the Arterio. There's a apartment building, two-story, right next door, and the main purpose, Dr. Modi will address in a couple seconds, but it's basically just to move some of the practice that's currently here, that needs expansion into this new building, and I'll let the doctor talk a lot more, he's more eloquent about what's gonna be happening. We are gonna be adding more parking spaces, and we are adding, all the stormwater is gonna be treated by a, all, correct that, all the stormwater for the improvements will be treated by infiltration system here, there, stormwater that currently flows onto the western portion of the site goes in some drywalls, which are currently there, so we're basically taking the new stormwater created over there, we're gonna be connecting to town water and sewer, obviously, and I'll defer now to the doctor.
Thank you. Mr. Weissman, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having us. We met offline with Mr. Wilson and Mr. Holman, and they suggested that I try and explain to you exactly what's transpiring here, because it's really not quite evident. A little bit of history, uh, when I came to this community, I was in a small office on Fulton Avenue, Doctor's Park, seven waiting room chairs, seven. Twenty years ago, Tom Aposto was suggested that I bid on this property, which is House Bolton Surgical, for those of you might remember, uh, it was a warehouse facility and really an eyesore, this area was just full of jetsam and dirt and debris. So it was ten thousand square feet, it was this portion of the building that existed. We moved in on Labor Day nineteen ninety-six, my office is the lower half of this building. Nineteen ninety-eight, we got approval from the DOH, Department of Health, to build a multi-specialty surgery center, which was housed in the north side of this building, uh, it's called Duchess Ambulatory Surgery Center, and it's been existing since nineteen ninety-eight. The good Lord's been good to us, we've gotten busier over time, we have really no room here to expand. The surgery center just got approval last month from the DOH to expand into this twenty-five hundred square foot addition that we built, I don't know, about eight years ago, um, so it's twelve thousand five hundred square feet, and this extension here, half of it, the north half, is clerical staff and storage for the surgery center, and the lower half is by clerical staff. So really, the only clinical area for us is here, and the surgery center is here. Now, ophthalmology is very tech-intensive, if you will, a person who comes in for a cataract consult goes through eight or nine different machines, and each one has a foot plate of, you know, about six feet by four feet, we have no room, we have no room to, the a problem with our practice is not the quality of care we provide, it's the throughput and the waiting time that patients complain of, and we we we're either gonna have to move out of this area or 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 leave, or or move out of here. So what we are proposing is just what we have right now, move it over here, so that we can put our Lasik suite and everything on the upper floor, and put all our HR, our our staff has no place for lockers, food to even eat, uh, so the upper story will be for the Lasik suite and the business, the clinical area will be in the lower part, so really, it's fifty-six hundred out of that fifty-four hundred, maybe fifty-three hundred's usable, this essentially is the same thing as what we have here, except we have two stories for other stuff. So what is transpiring is is the empty space that's gonna be here is really gonna be eaten up by more clerical stuff. All of the stuff that's over here is essentially gonna go over here, so there are no new physicians, no new practices, it's really our practices is growing into a larger area, and the surgery center is taking the whole north half of the building. We've looked, we were asked by Mr. Holman and Mr. Wilson to look at parking spaces and parking availability, and this is up to today, uh, and, you know, between very busy times to other times, we've got anywhere from two open spots to as many as thirty-five open spots, uh, and we've been looking at this hourly on on pretty much every day. So this is what we're proposing, and we absolutely need to move, so, yes, sir?
Uh, question regarding when the ambulatory services expand, would that mean? Would that mean that they will have more clients?
So, a very, a very good question. The same as we are trying to just accommodate the patients we have and treat them more efficaciously and more pleasantly, and improve their experience and their throughput, we right now have patients who are cramped together, all right, I had surgery all day today, we had something like thirty-three patients go through the surgery center in this little waiting room over here, all right, what's gonna happen is is we've got a thousand-foot All right, what's gonna happen is, is we've got a thousand-foot waiting room right over here, so the surgery center is just gonna take that waiting room over, and the other areas for the clerical and the HR stuff will be down here.
I think the way to describe it, it's not an expansion in the sense of more patients, just expansion of area to allow them to use the area more efficiently, not be so cramped. Same idea, just more space per patient.
Okay, now you, now you mentioned a Lasik suite on the second floor, is that currently in existence?
It's currently back here.
It's currently back there, okay.
It's a fifteen-by-thirty, twenty-room. It'll have to be located up here.
It's just so small right now, it's hard to get this.
You're just plain and simple out of space, and your space constraint.
Yeah, and all the, all the machines are too close to each other, so it's hard to, you know, everybody's just confining, this is adding.
Patients right now have to sort of squeeze in like this, and sit in front of one machine, and then move in. When you're dealing with eighty-five-year-old patients, it's really not very good.
If I could, do you feel that four ADA spaces are gonna be enough, based on your clientele?
Well, we have lots of space right now, vast majority of the times, my architect, Mr. Liskom, who's not here today, has come in to see me at two o'clock, at three o'clock, at ten o'clock, and they've been, he said, I can't believe how many empty spaces you have. And we have done an analysis of available space.
And to answer to Andy, the handicap and the ones who typically need additional are usually brought in by family members or caretakers that drop them off. Because when they come here, it's not as a typical doctor where it's you go in, half an hour, you leave, they're here for hours. So, this is a new dynamic of the type of those who, and more elderly too, they're dropped off, the people aren't sitting there waiting for four hours, they go home, they're given a phone call, they come back and pick them up. So that's another reason, the number of parking, we don't need per a normal doctor's type thing. Our patients are there for an extended period of time in order to go through all the machines. That's a dynamics that's different than what you would see at a general doctor's office, where you're going in for a physical for twenty minutes and leaving, or blood. It's a different type of use.
I did cataract surgery on this guy today, and I went out to the waiting room to ask for his wife, and he said, no, no, forget it, she's gone to get her hair done. I said, seems like you guys have been married for a while.
I imagine the nature, the nature of the patients, maybe that they may not be able to drive because of their condition.
It's the nature, not only that, your eye doctors are getting dilated, you know, those of us who've gone, and many of us who go, you always have someone pick you up, and, but here, it's the time that makes it more important, and it's not just they're being brought here, they're being dropped off and picked up later because they're driving to a store, or getting some chores done. And that's important to mention.
May I mention the issue of the variance we're seeking here?
Well, we're gonna get, we're gonna get to that, I think. All right, go ahead, you're gonna need a variance.
And correct me if I'm wrong.
It looks like you're also gonna need a special use permit.
I gather the rear of the property has to have a twenty-foot clearance from the line, the property line, and we are seeking a ten-foot variance, there's a thirty-foot gap here between the hotel or motel that's back here in their property line, and by just moving this building ten feet closer to the back of the property, we can have more parking spaces. So that's what we were hoping to get a variance for.
Again, that's up to the ZBA, which certainly sounds reasonable.
Yes, we understand that.
Okay. Eric, anyone wanna weigh in, and then we'll go around?
Sure. Thank you, good presentation. Thank you. That was very helpful, thank you. For tonight, the recommendation's just for the planning board to declare its lead agency intent, environmental review, and to circulate. To that end, a couple of minor, they're housekeeping issues, but they're also substantive. You mentioned, there was a question the zoning administrator raised about, about the use, the purposes of defining the approvals, because medical building is not a use that's in our zoning code. And so I think you answered tonight that there are gonna be some Lasik suites upstairs in the new building?
Well, it's, it's, it's really a transfer of what we have in the existing building.
Well, it's not a problem, I'm just asking, we just wanted to know what, we just needed a little more info, and it's in the, in the recommendation the board has today, it just seeks some clarification on the uses, so that the zoning administrator can identify what kind of use is being proposed with respect to the code.
Understood, understood.
That, right, and it also makes a procedural difference, because for a clinic, if there's a medical use in that new building where they're seeing people, it's, she's probably, according to my discussion with her, she'll probably determine it's a clinic, which makes it a special use permit use, as well as a site plan, but the special use permit would come from this board.
Understood.
It would be the same, it would be the same plan.
Okay.
But it does require a separate application to the board, which is, again, it's in the comments that you have.
Well, do concurrently.
Right. And then it also indirectly relates slightly to the, some of the other issues for approval, the standards for, it has to address the standards of approval for special use permit as well as for site plan. But it's all the same.
As we, as we try to get more efficient, this board just took over the responsibility of issuing special use permits, otherwise you would've had to go back to the ZBA to get that, so it's trying to.
It's not gonna be an ambulatory surgery center.
Okay.
All right.
Maybe I'll suggest one way of doing it, I think in here we just asked for more information, but from what you're describing, if there's a, perhaps a lot of questions about the parking and the use for purposes of review and approval, if you have a, if you have a floor plan of what you're gonna do, that shows what's gonna be happening where in the new building, and what's there in the old building, I think that would answer a lot of questions, because that would show that certain spaces are expanding, as opposed to the existing uses are continuing rather than new practice.
I've always believed there's no point in reinventing the wheel, so we have a nationally-known ophthalmology planner that's actually laying out the plan for us, I just spoke to him today about it.
So I, I think that would be very, very helpful.
That'll help answer a lot of questions.
Yeah, it would, in a lot of respects. That said, the comments, without having some of this information, earlier the comments were asking for an additional detail about the use and how it related to the parking, because so far it's just been references and discussion and nothing specific. So we were just asking to get some of this in writing, so that it can be on the record. And I think that will help, that will help move things ahead. There's also another housekeeping issue to help move things along quickly, if we're gonna circulate and send stuff out, we should, if we can get at least the clarification on use for the EAF clear, so that when we send it out, that has correct information, we don't wanna have to do that again, when we get it later. That would be helpful, and there's a couple of blanks in the EAF, if you can just check those off and fill them in, we can get that out the door, and that would enable, that would enable, if you can turn the other things around over the next couple of weeks, then we can get this back on the agenda again in October.
Okay.
We'd sent a letter out to all the neighbors, and had a meeting, an informal meeting at our office, to show them the plan. A couple came by and didn't have, didn't voice any objections, and I also spoke to Mr. Brodsky, who owns the property just to the east of the proposed new building, and I explained everything to him, and he didn't seem to have any objection either.
That's a good thing to do, excellent.
We thought it would be good to get some comments up front, that's very good.
We're also, these comments are also asking them to, again, provide a response and discussion for a couple of topics that are in the standards for site plan review and approval, I figured we might as well have you address them in your next submittal, having the buffer requirements, as well as the usual landscaping and lighting. Because there are some neighbors, there were some issues with that the last time around, it'd be good to get that. The board has had some unfortunate experience with that section of the code on a couple of other projects, so I just thought we should get that addressed up front, so the board can consider appropriate screening and, screening and landscaping for Davis Avenue and for the adjacent residential neighbors going forward, if we can get that on the plan, that would be great.
Okay, understood. Andy, anything from you? I had, I mean, I've issued my comment letter, I don't think there's really anything too significant here to mention. I guess I will mention, you know, there's, there's a swell along the back, that we just need to kind of make sure that it's not directing water right onto the adjacent property, that's, that's the one thing that I was.
No, it's really not, because we're taking all that where it used to go, and now taking the roof is tied right in there. But there's, very simply put, we could put a little yard drain right there.
I think that would be a good idea.
And we can connect it into the same drain that's going here. We just, it's, when we look at the numbers, a lot less going here than ever before, but it would be very easy just to drop a little small yard drain.
I think that would be a good idea.
There's a header pipe going down there here anyway, that's not a big deal.
Good.
That way, we intercept it, and our whole goal was to take everything and direct it in here. No, we could do that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, we're discussing the parking.
Yeah, I was just, I was just saying that, I think your approach to this is reasonable sounding, but the, we discussed, I think the problem with parking, it's not just whether you have enough parking for general usage, but for the peak times when you have the most people coming in, because when you get backed up a little bit, all of a sudden the need accelerates. And what the experience reported, and with a limited amount of data, this is very helpful, but I notice even in here, on the middle of the day at certain times, you know, we're getting zero parking available. So I think the plan to provide a little bit more parking is a good idea, but we may want to still get, again, have you, the problem, it's why the parking malls, the shopping malls all out there have these great enormous parking fields, there's nobody parking in them, but, except for one day a year, two days a year. And, because otherwise they'd all be parked on Route Nine. And we deal a little bit with the same here, except here, if there's not, if there's not enough parking, they end up on La Grange and Davis Avenue.
We never have that kind of influx.
Okay, well, we just, we only have the one copy, so the board hasn't seen your.
I have another one here somewhere.
So we'll have to get a copy, so we get a, for our next submittal, we, you know, we're not gonna be able to go through that tonight, but.
I would, I would like to point out, so, because we didn't stress it, we are adding parking spaces, so.
Yes.
What we're saying is, we're not gonna need any more, because the use will stay the same, but recognizing parking's an issue, we are adding more spaces, we're not keeping the same number.
How many more?
I believe twenty additional, twenty something, I thought it was like that.
Thirteen.
Thirteen additional.
Thirteen additional.
There's sixty on the existing and seventy-three.
And you're also having your staff, you rented spaces somewhere, your staff parks?
A number of them are parking on the street, they're, right now they aren't, right now they're using the property the way it is, but.
Is part of your plan to perhaps rent?
Space elsewhere.
Space elsewhere for employee parking, maybe somebody might wanna, you might wanna consider that.
We haven't really, we will have to start thinking about it.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we're going from sixty to seventy-five spaces.
And we might also want to authorize a, I know you did a parking study, but maybe we can get an outside consultant, engineer, or somebody to do their own parking counts over some period of time. I think that might be viable, we'll see what the board thinks, a viable.
Or the county, the county suggested, maybe there's a better way to lay it out, but I don't know.
They're only gonna, they're only gonna do it for six or eight months. No, I'm just kidding.
Is that all?
We'll figure out something, okay? Anyway, let me start around, let me start a rock out.
I think I've asked everything so far, are you going to add any employees? I know you said you're just moving things, but as you have more room, you might need more.
There are times when employees are scrambling for rooms just to examine a patient, just because of our shortage of space. So no, the answer is no.
Okay.
I'm all set.
I think my question was answered, my question was, because you're gonna be removing some of those trees, where that building is going to be, if you're going to be putting any brushes in, or any other trees.
Obviously, the trees where the building are, they're gonna go, but we have some very mature lovely trees along Davis Avenue, and those are all gonna stay, and it really makes it very nice and shady, and quite attractive.
Well, most of them will say there'll be a few in the corner by the parking, but those are kind of off the road a little bit, the ones right along the road are gonna stay, but there's a few right in the corner of the parking, I want to just full disclosure on that, but, because there's like two, there's trees that are right along Davis, and there's a few in the corner that are further back, and those one there further back will be cut down, so. But we'll show landscape plan for the next submission, and we'll augment that and show you.
Okay.
We're in the process of working on that right now, so, I understood it. That's good.
I think the, it's probably fairly evident to you that the question of parking is a major hurdle here. The county's comments, the bulk table needs to be clarified regarding, regarding parking, and I agree with them, I mean, it go on to say it's difficult to determine the correct number of required code existing and proposed parking spaces, when I, when you look at the bulk table on the plan that was presented, even with a magnifying glass, very difficult to determine, you know, what's there and what's proposed. So, make it simple for us, and make it easy on yourself, help us to understand, and, you know, we can move forward much, much more real quickly.
Mr. Finelli, if I may, this number of staff, and patients, and doctors, is essentially gonna be the same. Right now, we have had no complaints and no issues with the parking that we have, so we're really just expanding into a larger area so that we can be more efficient and more.
You're shifting from one building to another.
Precisely.
I understand that.
And so the parking is not gonna change, and we're adding more parking spaces, fifteen, right?
Fifteen.
Fifteen spaces.
Make it easy on yourself, and explain in words of one syllable, and we can move forward.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Carl?
Yeah, I don't have the reason to come over that way yet, one of these, one of these days, all these glasses, but, the, I just hear that anecdotally, the parking all the time, but sometimes it gets crowded, but, but I do see you're pushing it back in the corner there against the others, and putting the spaces in front, so that extra fifteen will hopefully go a long way. All my other concerns, and you did explain tonight that some patients are dropped off, and that helps the situation as well. You did say neighbors were happy with it, but I see chain link fence listed here, I can't remember if that's something you're gonna add, or is that an existing fence?
It's an existing chain link fence.
Existing fence. I guess my concern is that, you know, that house, what windows are on that side, is any kind of, you know, I don't know what time, what time you close, if it's dark, you know, especially in winter, lights from cars coming into that parking shining in their windows, and, and other lights billage from the parking lot.
Place is empty by four, four-thirty, it really, I mean, I will, I will sometimes see patients till later, six or six-thirty, but there's like three cars in the parking lot at that point.
Okay, I didn't know if a more opaque type of fence would be better in that section.
An area by the parking will show some screening, in the, in the back, there's no reason to, because the building's there.
Right.
Well, that's, that's a wooden fence.
Yeah, there's, you were talking about up in the front.
Just, yeah, up, up in the front toward Davis Avenue, is what I was talking about, where.
Yeah.
Where the parking, where the parking, but it's the.
The front forty feet, yeah.
And if there's gonna be any security lighting in that parking lot, that could shine it, or whatever, to make sure it's screened and cut off.
We'll show that it's not, we'll show it's not going off the company.
Cut off and et cetera.
Understood.
It's, nothing further than, at this point, thanks.
Thank you.
Me? I may be counting wrong, but from what I see here, I know you said a lot of people get dropped off, but there's still a lot of people who get driven for the procedures, and family members, whoever, wait for them, so that's gonna tie up spaces, but I may be counting wrong, I count five handicap spaces existing, and the proposal is for four, why do we go to less handicap spaces?
Because the handicaps right now are not being used, and we're still meeting the code, that we're looking at the use right now, so by removing one handicap, we're actually adding two spaces, we're adding extra parking space, because as you know, handicaps have another space next door you can't use, anecdotally, looking at the handicap spaces are not being utilized. So it's, if they were being utilized, we would have a need to go more, but to add additional or even keep the same means we have a playing on, there's a need for regular parking spaces, and not a need for handicap, therefore we do the logical of taking one and make it into two. That's our logic, whether you, we defer to the board, I'm just explaining my logic.
Well, I think it goes back to what I said about doing some parking counts, and even if it's a day or two's worth of somebody's time to do that, to substantiate what you've done and so on, and make everybody feel comfortable.
We don't have a problem, and that's why we've done it, at the suggestion, when we met with your staff over a month ago, we came to.
That's fine, we'll make, try and make that happen, and I think that'll go home. Again, we're only talking a couple of days.
Yeah, we want to give you a good background on it, so there's something you can spot check, and that's something that's very typical in the traffic engineering world of a spot check.
I was up there a few weeks back, my wife had to have something done, and a lot of people come and go, and, but it was, it wasn't unreasonable, you know, and I walked and got a cup of tea or something.
I think it'd be clearly seen when your engineer comes out and spot checks, he'll see that, it's when you drive by for five minutes, it looks busy, but when you sit there, and I've been there, when I did the survey, I was there for three days, so I was there a long time, and the cars come and go, but it's not as, it's not as full as you think when you're standing there looking.
Make believers, and then, you know, listen, this is a good project, we're happy that you're there, you keep it very, very nice, a new building will certainly be an enhancement, and, you know, it's, it's good for everybody, so we're certainly not opposed to it, just wanna make sure we get the parking right, that's all.
We understand, we'll work with you.
There's no complaints on file from neighbor, neighbors, PD, anybody like that?
Um.
From the park.
What do you mean complaints?
Complaints, just the.
Neighbors.
The neighbors.
Noise or traffic?
No, I meant from the parking.
Actually, the neighbors park at our parking lot, so, they wouldn't dare complain, that's some of our problems, is that if you wanna call that a problem, it's not really, but they are, both off of Fowler and all the others, they do come in and they park there and take a few spaces up.
Hair salon routinely has their clients parking in our lot.
So.
I can see they've been working on Joe's hair, that's.
There you go.
Okay, any other? Okay, any other questions, comments at this point, which, okay?
Right.
Let's move them along, so make something happen.
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department's circulation of a notice of said intent, a copy of the EAF, and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies.
Moved in second, that the planning board declare its intent to be the lead agency and coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department's circulation of a notice of said intent, a copy of the EAF, and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies. And call a question? I think it was moved in second.
Yep.
We're gonna call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application pending establishment of a lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following through 10, and comments tonight on the parking.
Second.
Moved in seconded, defer action on this application pending establishment of a lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following one through, yeah, number 11, comments from this evening specifically and more about the parking. And call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries seven zero. I think that, um, if we get all these, everything in and submitted, uh, we could probably get this thing hopefully wrapped up next month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I mean, you've got a lot of work ahead of you, Joe, but you know, you can do that.
Thank you very much.
I think it's fair to say.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for you for helping so many people so they can see better. I was surprised that Peter didn't give us a couple of one liners, I can see that, but you were thinking, weren't you? Okay, number five, plan review.
I voted, excuse me, I did vote aye.
That's true, that's true, we did vote aye, okay. But a being, right, okay. Maneri Ranucci Lot Line Revision, Planning Board to declare lead agency, uh, in Lot Line Revision Review regarding a lot line alteration to convey .17 acres, 33 Valley View Road and 9 Valley View Road Zoned R20 Resident Single Family, family 20,000 square feet, District .87 and 1.55 acres respectively. Unlisted action Matthew J. Maneri and Lynn A. Maneri owners and James Ranucci and Jennifer M. Ranucci, uh, owners. Hi.
How you doing? My name is Brendan Johnson, I'm with TEC Land Surveying. Um, we were hired by Mr. Maneri to complete the survey and perform a lot line alteration. Apparently, Mr. Ranucci likes to give land to Mr. Maneri because this is the second time that he's doing it. So, I mean, it's pretty fairly, it's pretty straightforward, just as you described, um, you know, Mr. Ranucci is going to be transferring, you know, roughly that .171 acres to Mr. Maneri, um, just so we can have a little more room, I suppose. So, I mean, it's pretty much all zoning requirements are still met. I went through all the comments that I received, and the only comment was from the zoning administrative about defining the lot width on Mr. Maneri's lot, um, still making the minimum 100 feet across the front, um, there. So I added that to the plan, which won't be on the ones that you have. And that's, that's pretty much.
So it will be 100 feet?
Yeah, it's 100, 103 and a half, I think, 103.5.
And they're doing this just so he can give some land to his neighbor?
Yeah, um, well, he has, the original lot line runs pretty close to his retaining wall for his driveway. So it's a little tight and he'd like to have a little more room and possibly do some other, I think some trees may have been planted on Mr. Ranucci's property, um, so.
Okay, I was wondering if there's a setback issue with the retaining wall now?
Yeah, no, um, as far as I know, um, everything's within, you know, the bulk requirement and.
Okay, okay, thank you. Eric?
Not much, that zoning information, um, would have been helpful had we gotten it ahead, but, but we are where we are, um, so we are gonna, we're recommending the board circulate for lead agency. It's gotta, we gotta coordinate the two boards. So we'll, we'll do that, um, and then we have a few questions, technical details, some of which you've answered. If we get those in, uh, if you can turn them around quickly, we could get it on next month.
Okay. Uh, questions, start with Brian, Annie?
I'm, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Brian.
Why do, why do they have to go, did you say they have to go to the zoning board for variance?
Yes, for variance.
For variance for what?
He just said they took care of that.
Oh, that's, so it's actually showing 100 feet?
It will. He's got a new map.
We don't need a variance.
You don't need a variance? I missed that, I'm sorry.
We're, we're three and a half feet wider than we need to be. She just, she realized that it was probably close, so she wanted to make sure that it was shown on the plan that we actually.
How much is there now? What's the existing?
Now is, is actually less.
It looks like the, the, the existing is about 100 feet.
It's very, yeah, it's very.
There were no numbers, so I didn't.
So the new one's gonna be 103?
Yeah, so we're actually getting more.
Okay.
More conforming.
Okay, that's, he said that's not what our map showed, but that's what's.
I thought I saw 97 feet on the map, maybe I was reading it wrong.
Yes.
No.
That eliminates, that's not an issue.
Then I would say the planning board's in a position to, um, issue an approval conditional upon verification of those points.
Good.
And, and the lack of a variance.
So we don't have to do a lead agency?
We would not have to do a lead agency.
Also, there's gonna have to be a new map that's going to be created.
Do you have a copy of that with you? Right there.
No, the, the entire, oh, yeah, okay.
I mean, I can obviously resubmit.
So we can take a picture of that one tonight and resubmit paper copies?
When, does Mr. Maneri have an attorney? Because I'm going to need to draft the deed and attach meets and bounds of the, of both parcels.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, he can either hire someone to do it or, um, we can look into that for sure. We haven't, that's kind of our next step, so we haven't really gone there.
Well, it's gonna have to be filed.
Oh, yeah.
So we're gonna need a deed description.
Well, in, in any case, we would, the, I think the conditions would still stand. He would need to generate a new map to verify the bulk standards and conditions, and also to address, there's a couple of other cleanup items here, and the conditions include the preparation of the deed that's required by chapter 135 for lot line revisions. So they'll, they'll, they're already, those conditions are already there.
Okay. But he wouldn't, uh, an appearance before the zoning board wouldn't be required as long as he satisfies that.
Correct.
Hundred foot.
Correct.
And it all, and the deed and all that stuff would have to be done before the signature?
Correct.
Right.
So then the board could ignore the, uh, the first one, a lead agency, and, uh, the second recommendation could be changed to a conditional lot line approval, um, conditioned on the following, um, and I guess one of the first ones to verify, uh, to verify the, that no variances are, provide data, provide zoning data to verify that no variances are required.
We gone around the board yet?
I thought I started with Brian?
Yeah.
Peter, you, you were speaking, I think.
That was my only, uh, observation was the plan.
Did you go yet?
No, I'm last. There was a deficient lot line, front lot.
Carl?
Frontage, but they've satisfied that, so after, I'm, I'm fine, as long as that's, yeah, that's satisfied.
Carl?
Yeah, I'm good at this point.
Ben? Rocco?
Yeah, it's just one thing, I had seen where this is, I assume that this is town water and, and the sewer, everything? Valley Road?
I believe that it's definitely town water. I'm uncertain about the sanitary.
I see, I see a sanitary manhole in Valley Road, I believe it must be in the sewer district.
Okay, because if not, I was gonna ask, is there still enough room there to handle the septic?
Yeah, well, the, the front, I mean, there's no proposed changes to buildings or anything, so I wouldn't think that'd be too much of an issue, and the, the front corner now is still very close to where it originally was. I think it's only a few feet over, and then the, the line just angles off a different bearing.
I think one of the comments was just to verify the location of utility connections because that would ensure that relocating the lot line doesn't then place any, a utility for one lot upon, onto the land being another lot.
Okay, yeah, I can certainly do that.
Peter, did you have another question? I'm sorry, I, okay, everybody good?
That was my only question.
Well, I'm, in that case, I move that the planning board grant conditional lot line approval for the Maneri Ranucci Lot Line Revision, subject to the following, one verify that no variances are required. Any other conditions?
I, I would include all of them.
Okay, okay, one through, well, the existing conditions plus the variances, one through four, plus five, verify no variance required.
Second. Okay, and also, number six is, Rocco pointed, they're gonna make sure that the, the utilities, whatever, stay on the appropriate property.
Correct.
Show them on the map, right?
Utilities, yeah, and number six, the utilities.
Okay. Now, you said, I guess, so you're not sure, I, I guess I moved.
No, I, oh.
I guess we're, I guess we're ready.
So whatever, whatever, whatever Carl said, and, and Eric said that all written down, so we're good to go, so. Let me call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries seven zero. Good. I'm glad you, you got the new map and make sure Eric gets a copy of that.
Thank you very much.
Now, the expensive part, you have to go to the lawyers and get all of that stuff done. Okay.
No lawyer jokes. Go easy though.
Okay, Beacon Residential. Did that one. Planet Wings, addition 661 Duchess Turnpike Withdraw, amended site plan and amend architectural review to replace a proposed building renovation and expansion for retail and restaurant use with renovation of the existing 2,985 square foot building for retail use only. 661 Duchess Turnpike Zone, BSC Business Shopping Center, .72 acres, unlisted action, Planet Wings of Poughkeepsie owner. So the bad news is no more wings.
Mr. Chairman, I'll recuse myself from comments.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Dennis Lynch with the Engineering. You're the advocate, Franco Fidanza for Planet Wings. As you may know, we were, uh, did receive a conditional approval back in April 20th for, um, basically breaking the existing building into retail and wings into the rear. We were back in front of the board on July with an amended application showing an addition on the back of the, the building. We have since want to, uh, kind of withdraw that application and go with the original approval, um, with the one exception that it would only be the, the Verizon. There was a plan that was submitted on August 20, 30th, um, showing basically all the conditions that were conditional of the approval, with the exception of the existing building. Just hit some of those highlights, uh, there was the existing, uh, drive-through that will be removed now, reclaimed into grass area, uh, there was some additional, uh, ADA parking and, and, uh, the curb ramps to bring up the code, and we also relocated and increased the size of the refuse enclosure. We do have a rendering of the, the building. It is the, exactly the same as before, with the exception that this approximately here is where the Planet Wings, uh, was starting, um, so we are just extending the, the total facade to include just the Verizon.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Sure. It is a little unusual because it's asking the board to back up instead of go forward, but, uh, I think you guys can do that. So it is, it's the recommended, recommended action is just to accept the withdrawal, um, of the change, uh, and to reinstate the previous conditions of approval, approval, uh, modified to acknowledge the change in the proposed, uh, in the proposed, um, and then the modified, the, the limiting the building to the one use does change their architectural needs. He's provided rendering, so we're recommending architectural review and approval. We had a couple of comments seeking to coordinate, um, just what's shown on the elevations to what's on the plan. I guess there's a doorway that doesn't appear to match, um, just to get, I, I don't know what we have in the way, this seems to be different than the last time, so we suggested material and color samples, um, and then just in keeping with some past practice of the board, of the board, for your consideration, we suggested one of the walls is blank. It is within view of Burnett Boulevard, uh, so we were suggesting the inclusion of some windows, even if they're faux windows, on the more visible corner closest to Burnett Boulevard for that elevation, and that's the extent of our comments.
Okay, thank you. Nicole?
My only, um, question was whether there's gonna be enough parking. That corner seems to be a little, uh, short of parking right now, right? A, a little bit. Was there gonna be some added parking for?
The, um, we're showing 29 parking spaces, uh, which was more than enough for the both uses.
Okay.
Now, we're removing one of the uses, uh, the, the restaurant use, which was a more intensive use, um, so there's more than enough parking for, for the use.
For the retail. Okay.
Peter?
Uh, just one quick question, on the, this plan, you have the snow storage down at the northwest corner. Is that where you had it, is that where it was placed before? Do you recall?
Yes.
The snow storage?
That's how it was shown on the last, the last plan.
Thanks.
The, the only revision on here is obviously the, removing the, the other use and the facade of the building.
Thanks.
Carl?
Uh, a couple of things, I guess. You, so you're removing that, that, that back enclosure where the cooler is now? So that's, that all goes away? So it's a smaller footprint overall?
Yes.
So I guess there's, so that's gonna be kind of landscaped or grassed in, or how's that?
Uh, right, yeah, there's, there's some landscaping that's there that will be remained, the rest of it will be.
Um, the area where you're removing it is just a.
It's gonna be.
Bytop cooler area or whatever it is, whatever.
That's, that right now is, it's, uh, in, it used to be the old parking area. That's gonna be removed and we're gonna grass it.
Grass it.
Um, that whole drive area will be reclaimed.
So where the.
And a whole drive-through area as well, right?
Yes.
And where the cooler was, it'd be grassed over?
Yes.
Okay.
We're showing that, that area, um. It's, uh, located right here.
Right.
So we're showing this.
All that area there.
Well, we cannot look at that right now because we don't know what the, we don't know what the Planet Wings is gonna look like, so we can't really decide what we're gonna do on the backside. Correct? If we remove.
I mean, that's an opportunity for, if you needed, that's an opportunity for some more parking spaces, I would say, but.
It's really, it's not as wide, it's, it's only, the cooler's only about eight feet, so it seems larger than what it is. It's only a dummy wall, and there's a cooler that was there.
Yeah, once you remove that dummy wall and the cooler.
But there's actually sidewalk that was existing underneath.
Oh, underneath, oh.
So there was, that was an existing sidewalk that wrapped around the building.
Oh, okay. So, that's gonna stay there, then?
Well, we don't know what our future, if we're gonna go ahead with the Planet Wings to build our new structure there, which will be close to the back of that building, so that landscape would have to change again.
All right, timeout.
Wait a minute. Back up.
Back up. You're gonna build a Planet Wings?
We're not, right now, we're dropping everything. We're doing the Verizon, so we're not doing anything but the Verizon building now.
But in the future, you may come back?
If, if and when, we'll come back to the board.
Right.
That's not on the table right now.
So, so the way, the way, the way we structured this so that you could move ahead was you decided that rather than go ahead with the plans for the restaurant, you're gonna go ahead with complete site plan just for the Verizon building. If you wanna come back to, to propose an amendment to that in the future, you can. But the plan that you get approved by the board here is the one that will be approved.
Correct.
So, whatever terms you work out with the board for the treatment of any particular areas for this plan is gonna be what you will need to live with unless and until you get an amended approval for something else.
Got you. All right, so then we're typically staying with the Verizon.
Yes, with this, that's removing, relocating, taking this, this off and reclaiming this as.
Just some grass, some grass or something.
Yes, right. We don't, I mean, we could show parking there, but we're over the parking. And at this point, there's no reason to.
If you have sufficient, then you don't need it.
Yes.
And that was, curious why the handicap space was so far away from the door, too. It's just split up that way.
We can, we can relocate it. I mean, that was, I mean, we can, we can relocate that over here. Then that was a.
Just like an extra spot.
There was a comment to have the.
I know.
Additional. I'm sorry.
Well, we were, we were trying to get a sidewalk connection to Route 44 and put one into Burnett.
There's a sidewalk connection that was requested that we're showing here with the crosswalk. So, naturally, we came over to, instead of coming in the middle of a parking spot, coming into a handicapped landing, loading area. We could possibly put another one here. We are over the number. Maybe we have more than enough handicap.
Yeah, if it's a two handicap, that's sufficient for the code. That's, you don't need it, but it just, just seemed odd that you were separating that way. I mean, I was asking, you know, a few meetings back about trying to get something connected in from here where the handicap was.
Originally, the handicap is located in this location. There's a ramp that's here that doesn't meet current standards, so that's gonna be removed. And that's why this is being relocated to have a proper ADA ramp.
Okay, so it didn't meet the standards where it was. That's, I was running away. It got moved.
Okay. Thanks, Carl. Ben?
I'm totally confused.
It's gonna be a Verizon store.
I know. I'm kidding.
Because of those floodplain issues, then if they ever decide they wanna do something and fight that battle, that's a whole nother set of expectations and secret.
I'm kidding.
Yes.
It's a tough call.
Can you hear me now?
Late, it's late in the day.
I know.
I had one more comment. I think, I think the department mentioned it or something, but you, you know, the back wall there is windowless at the moment. You put a fake window or something on the.
You're talking about this.
Or the north, the north facing wall. Yep.
This, this wall?
Right.
Yeah, you could show the color rendering for the.
Just by our town code, you should not have a, this wall facing any streets.
This, just for reference, this is the one that's facing 44.
44.
This is Burnett East. Boulevard. This is to the rear that's facing the auto, oil change workplace. This is what's gonna be facing to the, to north of the building. We can do some kind of decorative. It's, it's EFS. You can do different textures of different designs in there, joint work to make it look so it's not one continuous.
I'm not so sure. I'm worried about the side that faces the oil change place, are we?
No, I mean, I was thinking more like this corner here is, it wraps, you know, if this, if that wraps around, have a, have a window there or something, but.
Dennis, can you just point the, the blank wall on the rendering? Can you just point to which side of the building that is on the site?
That's where the cooler is now.
It's that, right. It's that one there. So, it's about, what is that, about 30 feet from Burnett Boulevard, the corner?
From the corner here?
No, from the, from the.
Right there.
Property with Burnett Boulevard. Yeah, what's the separate?
It's 52 feet to the, the property line and you got another probably 15 feet. You do have to remember, I mean, there's, there's a retaining wall here, so when you're actually coming down Burnett Boulevard, you don't really have a clear shot. This is kinda heavily wooded here. So, you don't really see that as you're coming.
I don't think it's a problem on that side.
Maybe it's not an issue, then.
You do see it. It's visible.
I think it's all right.
All right.
Ben, you good? You good?
I'm fine, thanks.
Can you hear us now?
I can.
All right. So, Carl?
I move that the planning board accept withdrawal of amended Planet Wings site plan proposal for a building expansion dated June 26, 2017, and reinstate the April 20, 2017 Planet Wings condition site plan approval amended to change the previously approved retail and restaurant use of the existing building envelope to retail use only.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. That the planning board accept withdrawal of the amended Planet Wing site plan proposal for building expansion dated June 26, 26, 2017, and reinstate the April 20, 2017 Planet Wings condition site plan approval amended to change the previously approved retail and restaurant use of the existing building to retail use only. Okay. Call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Brian recused.
I'm sorry. Six zero. That's right. Brian recused himself.
Any more architectural comments?
Uh, no, I.
I would, I would just suggest the, just to, there's a couple of comments, I think numbers. One is the zoning administrator, three, four, uh, two, four, and, four and five have to do with consistency of the elevation and the plan.
All right. I move that the planning board approve conditioned, conditional amended architectural review subject to the following, one through five.
I think, did you, did you, I think you wanted to take number three out.
Right.
Was it?
The north elevation provides, take number three out, right.
Number three, sorry. Take three out.
And the west elevation is blank, but that's, that's right next to the creek and next to the other building here. Okay, the rest of it's okay.
So, number three is getting removed?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's seconded. Call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another Verizon store. Other business, town board referral of zoning amendments to Section 210-9 definitions, specifically daycare center recommendations to the town board regarding proposed amendments to definitions of daycare center. Eric?
Yeah, this.
It could be semi daycare centers?
This amendment is, the, the code definitions relating to daycare are kind of antiquated. They were just brought over wholesale back in 2000 when the code was adopted. And now we're getting queries from like Greystone and Abilities First, and even daycare providers about adult day hab and different age groups and kinds of daycare. And so, this, the amendments here proposed to the town board are just bringing the definitions for these different kinds of daycare uses in line with the state's definitions.
Comments? Questions? Anybody?
Sign of the times.
Sign of the times, yeah, that's probably true. Okay.
Yeah, makes sense.
So, we move that we convey, we convey a positive recommendation to the town board.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, the Sago Shainer Lot Line Time Extension. Uh, this is, I'll back away. Lot Line Revision Review Regarding a Proposal to Convey .17 acre portion of Three River Row to Four Main Street, New Hamburg Zoned R20 Resident Single Family 20,000 square feet, R-NH Residence New Hamburg and WD1 Waterfront District 1, 1.0448 acres. Negative deck was adopted June 15, 2017. Andrea Sago and Edward Sago owners and Marjorie Shainer owner. With the planning board grant a 90-day time extension of conditional lot line revision